Committee of the whole meeting, first portion of the committee of the whole meeting will include budget discussion. I'll have the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cameron.
Here.
Harbinero.
Here.
Danny.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. And the agenda item we're going to cover on the early session of committee of the whole this evening is under Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Danny.
Thank you very much. The first item we have is the 2016-17 proposed budget review. And I think we all have, pardon me, we all have our information. I'm going to ask staff, please, if you would proceed with the presentation.
Thank you. Let me just make a couple of comments before our finance director begins the presentation. Tyler, where's Tyler? Wave your hand, Tyler. Tyler is our graduate student intern, and he has his graduate class in budgeting. And he showed me the book and tabbed four or five different places where they talk about Bartlet's budgeting. They have our forms in here that they use as a model. And so I thought I would tell you that because certainly it's much to Jeff's credit that we are in the published books that they teach in graduate school about how to budget. And secondly, gives Tyler an opportunity to brag in class about the site where he works. So I thought if anybody wanted to see that, I guess I have to give it back to Tyler so he can get homework later on. But I wanted you to know and thought you would be very proud that we are the model in graduate school.
Don't give that to us until the homework's done.
[laughing].
Do you know, did they ask you where the heck is Bartlet? Most of them, or?
Actually, a lot of people know where Bartlet is, especially in the class talking about it. Every teacher knows every.
Just make sure they know it's Bartlet, Illinois, not Tennessee or...
Texas. They said Bartlet in every state.
All right, good. Good point. If you get a chance, though, it's pretty cool to look through that textbook and see, you know, Bartlet's forms and stuff.
All right. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Valerie. And it's my pleasure this evening to present the 2016-2017 proposed operating budget. I'd like to thank staff, members of the public, and of course, the village board for all the hard work that they put in during the fall and winter. It's a compilation of everybody's hard work that we can be here at this time. So with that being said, I would like to go over what this budget is really about and how we construct the budget. As Valerie was just alluding to, this budget is more than just a numbers document. The budget serves really four main categories where we try to put the budget document together so it's transparent to the public and the community. I'll go over those four items. The budget serves as a policy document. We have village-wide long-term financial policies in the budget. We also have village-wide non-financial goals and objectives such as our strategic plan. And I understand that the board will be meeting very soon to discuss and update our strategic plan. Once that's done, we'll incorporate those goals into the budget. We also have clearly stated goals and objectives in each of the departments. Probably most importantly, the budget serves as a financial plan. In the document, you will see that we summarize our major revenues and expenditures in the budget summary section. We have a long description of our major revenues. And we do project our major changes in fund balance, which we will be going over this The budget serves as an operations guide. The budget describes the activities, services, and functions of the village. We do include an organizational chart so the public can get an idea of how our structure works. And we do include a detailed itemized summary of our personnel in the budget. And finally, the budget serves as a communications device. We define who develops, prepares, reviews, and adopts the budget because each of us are stakeholders in the process. We provide a detailed budget message to the Board of Trustees that Valerie put together. Again, we define our financial policies such as our fund balance, long-term capital planning, which we just did this past November and December. And we include a lot of statistical data in our history, understanding how we come about determining these budget estimates. And they also convey long-term information to the public. So with that being said, I think that this is important to go over each year because come the early spring, we will be submitting our application to GFOA to have our budget reviewed. It's reviewed by three individuals, and hopefully, we will win the award for reporting in our budget document again. Okay, so moving into the numbers, or I should say, well, looking at the budget calendar, just want to touch on where we're at right now. Our next meeting is March 8th, where each of our departments will go over their budgets. March 15th, we will have a public budget review and public hearing. And then this budget is due to be adopted on April 5th. And we've built in some time in case we need some additional meetings. So that's how we got to this point. So starting out with, on the revenue side, where the money comes from. Total revenue in this budget is $50,001,92,584. Budget is broken up into very different distinct parts as far as revenue. Property taxes represent 18% of the budget. Other taxes, such as our income tax, sales tax, local use tax, which has now become a major revenue source or a part of that, 33%. Our charges for services at 26%, that is our enterprise fund revenues. Some interest earnings, borrowings in our TIF funds, which are primarily the notes in the two TIF districts, and some IEPA loans in the water fund. And other revenue represents 9% of this total pie. So on the other side, where the money goes, our total expenditures, $53,582,291. Capital projects, we have an abundant amount of capital projects, especially in our enterprise funds. That represents 25% of the budget. Debt service on general obligation debt, our three general obligation bond issues represent 4%. Golf at 5%. General government at 14%. Public safety and public works represents the majority of our expenditures. And please feel free to stop me any time if any questions come up. Our operating versus our capital expenditures, so in totality, how the budget is broken down. The light shaded region here are our operating expenses, and the blue shaded region are our capital. The operating portion of the budget, $40,314,238, 0.21% decrease from last year. And then our capital projects budget are $13,268,053. Moving into the detailed revenue section of the operating budget. Our revenue by fund, again, our proposed budget, total of $50.1 million net of transfers. And this is a 14% decrease in revenue from the prior year. General fund makes up the largest portion of our revenues. Special revenue, which is our MFT fund, again, we talked about debt service, that is property taxes to pay for principal and interest on our bonds. Capital projects, revenues in our TIF funds, and then our enterprise funds make up 36% of the total pie. So our first major revenue to talk about this evening are property taxes. Property taxes this year, $9,275,478, again, 18% of total revenue. We've decreased the budget for property taxes down $78,886, or 0.84% from last year. Again, the dollar amount for property taxes includes our levy for our general corporate fund, the police pension contribution, and debt service. So when you look at the village's share of property taxes and you compare it to all the taxing districts, we make up 8% of that total. And we've kept that number very consistent over the last several years. The decrease in the levy is primarily in the police pension fund. We're seeing some pretty good returns last year. Can't say that at the end of April 30th with the markets is going to be that great, but we were able to take advantage of that and increase the levy a little bit. For the first time in many years, we're projecting an EAV increase of 2% as the real estate market rebounds. Again, I've had conversations with DuPage County clerk and feels confident that EAV will continue to grow based upon what he's seen. So with this property tax levy and our EAV, the estimated DuPage rate is $1.06 per $100. And our estimated Cook County rate is 88 cents per 100. Again, there's no increase for the seventh consecutive year to the general corporate levy. Quickly, the timetable.
One minute, Jeff. Inside your budget that we got a few weeks ago, it says the DuPage rate is $1.06 per $100, and the Cook County rate is 88 cents. Or no, it says the DuPage rate is 88 cents.
Well, let me review that.
I was just curious which one was...
Okay, yeah.
And that was actually one of my questions also, is why is it such a big difference?
It has to do with the different EAV in both of the counties and the burden factor. We talked about the burden factor a couple of years ago. The dollar amount that we levy is, 65% of this levy goes towards DuPage County. And then when you divide that by the EAV of DuPage County, that's how you come up with your rate. So they're both very different because of the EAV and the burden factor that's applied by the state. I'll review those.
And the different pieces that go into the different counties are different. Cook County pays for mosquito abatement on their tax bill. And in DuPage County, we pay for it out of our general corporate fund. As you know, the MSWRD pays for sewer treatment in the Cook County side, and they are charged on their tax bill for that. And in DuPage County, they are not as part of our general services.
Okay, thank you.
I think it just could be that those two counties are flipped. You're talking about Page S18?
Yeah, I don't know which one's accurate.
S18, yeah. I think that we may have just...
Okay, I'll take a look at that and verify.
As memory serves me, that last year, the DuPage was $1.087.
Okay, we'll review that before the document is approved. Review of the levy timetable. With the approval of the budget, that's the first step in the process. In the fall, we come back and formally approve the levy. Then in 2017, DuPage County and Cook County collect these taxes that we levy for. So taking a look at a little bit of history, as far as our tax rate history, now what you're seeing, Cook County, the blue line, and DuPage County, the red line, we're now seeing the rates go down. And that is because the village has kept our dollar amount flat and decreasing. And now, conversely, EAV will go up. That will tend to drive down the rate. And hopefully, the residents will see that this upcoming tax year. A quick review of our assessed value over a 10-year period. It hit its peak in 2010. Recession hit, and you can see it's decreased to under $1 billion in EAV for both Cook and DuPage. But now in 2016, we're putting in a 2% increase, so we're increasing it a little bit.
It doesn't look so dramatic as it does in this graph. You know, when you look at the graph and see exactly how much our EAV has decreased...
On the high, excuse me, on the high end, our EAV was $1.6 billion. Last year, we were down to about $950 million. So yeah, it's been a big drop, and that's consistent with a lot of communities. Looking at our income tax revenue, we have a budget of $4,368,048, 7% of total revenue. And we're budgeting an increase of $243,048, or 2% from last year. The IML has projected a per capita rate of $106 per capita. So we take our population, multiply it by an estimated rate from the IML of $106, and we're able to estimate what we'll receive in income tax. And that's commonly known through the state as LGDF. The IML is pretty optimistic, I think, this year that they're seeing some good things in the economy and the corporate world, and they're raising that rate by about 4%. The state of Illinois, as I think everybody knows now, the rate that individuals pay is 3.75%. That changed in February of 2015, and the village currently receives 8% of that amount. It's kind of confusing how they did it. So it used to be 5%, and now it came down to 3.75. And I think it's going to decrease in another year or two. But the IML fought to make sure that we stay whole so that we'll continue to get dollars based upon our per capita rate and not have a decrease. One of the best signs of our economy, I think, this year is our local use tax. We now have a budget of $1,078,825. It's a $276,325 increase, or 34% from last year. Again, it's the same method. IML projects a per capita rate based upon our population. What the use tax is, is a form of sales tax where goods purchased and delivered from outside of Illinois are taxed. In February of 2015, Amazon had to start paying sales tax. That is why we are seeing a nice spike in revenue, and it's primarily from the online retailers now that have to withhold Illinois' sales tax. So if Amazon or Walmart corporate, somebody from Bartlet goes online, buys something, they're charged that use tax, a form of sales tax, and it's remitted back to us. So I think, you know, the state has fought for quite a while to get Amazon and those big-box retailers to withhold.
How accurate is this population figure?
It hasn't changed for a while, and that is certified.
Is it time to do another census? Are we going to gain anything by it? I'm sorry, I couldn't. Go ahead, I can't hear.
We are maybe a little bit higher than this, but not enough to justify doing a special census.
Okay, thanks.
That's based upon our 2010 census, so. So I think there's some good news there on the local use tax. Sales tax, we have a budget of $2,205,000, 4% of total revenue. And we're projecting a $90,000 increase, or 4% from last year's budget. I think every month, I do an update on sales tax, and we see that we've had a nice steady incline in sales tax this past year. Again, we receive 1% tax on the purchases made within the village. There's a three-month lag where the state remits that revenue to the village. They are not behind in sales tax, and those remittances have been on time. We have one sales tax sharing agreement still, and that's with Welch. That expenditure is shown in the Community Development Department under rebates. The Welch agreement is due to expire in 2016, and I think we projected about an additional $20,000 we might see once that rebate goes away.
Is that a 10-year?
Yeah, 10 years, yeah.
Well, they have timing, don't they?
Yeah. It was a 50% share.
That's the giant cement pipes.
Big pipes.
Yeah.
Our telecommunication tax, we have a budget of $1,057,500, 2% of total revenue. Unfortunately, we had a budget a decrease of $117,500, or 10%. This is a tax the village collects on land and cellular services of 6%, similar to the sales tax and how they collect and remit. But over the last six years now, we've seen a really steady decline in the telecom tax. And it just, every year, it's going down. And I think, again, as streaming services are becoming more and more popular, free texting and other free minutes, people are taking advantage of that, and we are seeing that at our level, that there's a decrease in revenue, and it's down probably about $500,000 from where it was about six years ago. Real estate transfer tax, we have a budget of $610,000, 1% of total revenue. And we are budgeting a $100,000 increase from last year's budget, or 20% from last year. We are seeing some really nice returns in the finance department when we collect the real estate transfer tax. The volume of transfer stamps and the average residential home value is increasing, along with some commercial properties now that are selling and changing hands. So that, I think we can easily project a $100,000 increase from what we're currently seeing this year. Looking at some of our enterprise fund revenue, we'll start out with water sales. Water sales, we have a budget of $6.7 million, 12% of total revenue. We are projecting a decrease of $475,000, or 7% from last year. Obviously, our revenue is based upon our consumption estimates. Our budget assumes about a billion gallons of water billed every year. This is pretty much a conservative estimate based upon what we bill this year. One of the reasons why I think we're decreasing it is because this past summer was a little wet, and we're waiting for some more of those commercial properties to come on where we can bump up that consumption and increase our revenue a little bit. The average residential monthly water bill remains at $38.16. We base that upon the $6,000 per month average. I know we've talked about the Burke study quite a bit. The last rate increase for water that we had is in 2012. We'd like to review the rates in 2016. I think by that time, we'll have a real good idea of where we're going to be at with our water purchase agreement. So it's probably a good time, I think, at that point, to review our rates. Looking at our revenue consumption in history, as far as water consumption, in 2012, you can see, that was a drought year. And what that did is really helped beef up some of our fund balance where we were able to actually pay cash for some of our capital projects. Consumption now has trended down a little bit, but we are, again, we're waiting for some more commercial properties to come on. The water revenues now, really since, you'll see the spike in 2012 and 13, but we've been pretty consistent in water revenues for the past four years after the drought of 2012. Our sewer sales, we have a budget of $3,250,500, 5.5% of total revenue. We are not budgeting an increase this year because sewer sales have remained very consistent. Sewers build out a little bit different. Approximately 50% of our sewer sales are from a fixed-rate charge, where 100% is completely from consumption. The sewer charges between Cook and Kane and DuPage are different because of MWRD. Cook residents will see a sewer bill, I think, on their property taxes, or a sewer levy on their property tax bill, whereas DuPage, that's all billed by the village. Cook and Kane can expect to pay $1383 per month in this budget based upon 6,000 gallons. And DuPage would pay $2249 per month based upon that same consumption. Same thing with the water fund. We haven't increased these rates since 2012. And we feel it's a good time to look at the rates in 2016. We have a lot of capital projects in our capital budget, and I think we need a couple of those, along with our operating expenses, and review our rates at that time. Looking at our golf course revenues, we have a budget, just at the golf course, of $1,255,900, 2% of total revenue. We're taking a $26,000 or 2% decrease in this current year budget. The reason for that decrease is primarily in the rounds of golf. Working with Phil, we've determined we're going to decrease our rounds by 1,500, down to 34,000 from 35,500 last year. These are estimates based upon the trends over the last two years. Pro shop sales are $72,500. We've decreased that a little bit as our inventory and sales in the pro shop has decreased. With that being said, I think, you know, at the six-month budget review, we looked at the golf course. We've had a really good February. We just talked about that at staff meeting. March and April, hopefully, will continue the same trend, and I'm confident that the golf course will run a surplus at the end of this year. But this is just a conservative estimate based upon where we're at. The food and beverage operation at the golf course, $988,000 budget, 1% of total revenue, or an $8,000 increase, or 1% from last year. The volume of weddings and special events continues to increase. Number of guests at these functions are increasing. Again, I think we're just being conservative, but a 1% or generating a little additional revenue, I think, is appropriate for the food and beverage operation. Finally, the last major revenue source to look at is our building permits. Building permits for budgeting $641,275. It is a $34,225, or 5% decrease from last year. This is a very conservative estimate based upon what is going on. I know we've had some developers in the boardroom over the last year, but we try to not budget everything that we see so we're conservative and not inflating revenue too much. But we think that there should be 19 residential permits and three commercial permits budgeted. Very conservative, again. And 3,000 miscellaneous permits. Obviously, the bulk of our permits are miscellaneous permits. Residential permits, it could grow to 4,000 permits in this budget based upon what's going on. So we think that this is a good conservative number for this area.
Don't we have, Jim, maybe you can ask this, don't we have quite a bit more of an increase in residential for all the developments that are on the line?
We have a couple of new developments that are coming online, but in terms of constructing this year, really only one is going to make it, and that's at Bartlett Point West, and that's the 29-unit one. The one up on the ridge, one, Bartlett Ridge up on Naperville Road, they just resubmitted for their final. By the time they get through it, it's possible they could construct one or two, but they're quite a bit behind Bartlett Point West.
Okay.
So next year, that one will come online, and that's 57, so.
Be a lot of permits.
It could be, yeah.
So there's some potential out there. That wraps up revenue. And at this point, I don't know if there's any other questions. I'd be happy to take them at this point, or we can just move on to the expenditure side. In years past, I've been a little bit more detailed about the individual departments. I'm going to briefly go over our expenditure area, and our departments are going to go into more detail on March 8th about their budgets. So we'll take a look at our total operating expenditures in this proposed budget. Again, $40.314 million, and we were able to submit a 0.21% decrease in operating expenditures. And you can see here that over the last four years, we've held the line on operating expenditures. While you look at our total budget and you factor in capital projects, and those swing each year based upon the costs and what's in our capital budget and the needs for infrastructure. But our operating budget remains consistent and pretty much flat over a good three- or four-year period. And you'll see that in each of the individual departments when we talk about that. Our operating expenditures by type, personnel service, obviously the biggest operating expense in the budget. Our contractual services are at 19%, commodities at 4%. Other charges in the budget are 18%, and capital outlay, 3% of the total budget. And looking at our operating expenditures by department, the golf course represents 7% of the budget, debt service at 5%. Public works is at 37%. That includes streets, water, sewer, and the parking fund. And public safety, including the police department and the police department. And public safety, including the police department and the police pension fund, are 33%. And general government at 18%. Taking a look at the budget in its totality, kind of a budget snapshot of what the highlights of this budget are, you will see that there are no new taxes or fees in this budget. Again, our property tax levy will remain flat. We did factor in a non-union wage increase of 2.5%. The vehicle replacement fund, all of our departments submitted requests for vehicles, and the total to be funded in the budget is $919,000. Currently, five positions are being held open or eliminated through all of the departments. We talked about a water and sewer rate review in the fall, and we're proposing to use $250,000 of our general fund reserve to fund the Emerald Ash Bore tree replacement program, the replanting of that program. We've done that last year, and we've stayed within budget.
I thought that we funded the EAB replanting program from developer.
Yeah, the takedown of the trees with a big expense. Yeah, we took that out of developer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Replanting out of general.
But in order to keep up with the replantings, we, if you recall, we did a May as well as an August planting thing, and we've kept up with that, hopefully, to have some real catch-up with everything we've taken down.
And finally, probably the most important area to review this evening is our fund balance, or the equity in our four main operating funds. I'll start out with the general fund. The general fund has a fund balance policy which generally dictates 25% to 35% of our operating expenditures. And then we do try to reserve designated reserves for the increase in our property tax levy, which has been flat for many years. And then we have a stormwater reserve. That's kind of been depleted a little bit with the Amherst project that happened a couple of years ago, so we're trying to build that up a little bit. And then there's a really old reserve for the tricentennial celebration, and these are all reserves that are approved by resolution in prior years. Okay, so in the general fund, if you pay particular attention to the middle bars here, this is what the estimated fund balance is for April 30th, our budgeted year in '16, '17, and a projection for '17, '18, and '18, '19. The outside bar and the inside bar are our minimum and maximum by policy. You can see here that our estimated fund balance is more than our minimum and maximum dictated by policy. We're projecting, at the end of this current fiscal year, they have about $12.2 million in general fund reserve. It's about 60% now. And I know the mayor's mentioned that for the last couple of years. I think that gives us some flexibility going forward to do some other things if the board wishes to get into some different type of capital outlay or other types of projects. The recession, I think, is behind us, and, you know, there's flexibility there going forward in that reserve. It's a very strong fund balance. The water fund, again, same type of policy that's approved by resolution. The middle bar represents our estimated fund balance. Both '15, '16, really all years that we project, we're projecting that at a minimum, our water fund balance will be above the minimum balance, but a little bit sometimes below the maximum. At the end of this current fiscal year, we'll have $3.2 million in the water fund reserve. In future years, based upon the agreement with Algen that will come forward, our operating expenses will increase because of the additional purchases of water, so we factored in some things there to keep our fund balance steady through those years. Sewer fund, and same concept, estimated fund balance at the end of this year of $1.23 million. We do have some substantial capital outlay in the sewer fund, and we are proposing to use some of our fund balance, such as the Country Creek Lift Station. It's about $550,000 that we're paying cash with out of this year's budget, so you will see a decrease in fund balance. But we talked about reviewing rates. At some point during the rate review, we would like to at least get that fund balance up to a minimum level to support the operating expenses, future debt service, and future capital outlay of the sewer fund. And finally, the golf course this evening, unfortunately, I really don't have any fund balance. Really, what our objective is, is to provide a balanced budget at the golf course, and you will see that the golf course this year is projecting about a $26,000 surplus for '16, '17. And I think we will break even this current year at the golf course. I don't see it losing money, all things being said. Some factors have to be good: weather, economy, things like that. But there's been significant expenditure cuts at the golf course. We've held on to our golf course director now for the last two years. It's a substantial savings, and it's helped to balance the golf course budget. So with that being said, I think I met my goal of 15 minutes to look at the museum. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have. And again, we're due to review all the budgets, department budgets, on March 8th next week.
Is there any reason, Jeff, to be concerned with audits when we drop below the fund balance, for instance, in the sewer fund? Is it that significant of a deal where they're?
Yeah. It's, in the sewer fund, it's not that significant. We talk about fund balance in the general fund. Moody's takes a look at our general fund reserve, amongst other things. They typically don't really look at our enterprise funds because that is something we can control at the local level by rates. We control that by our rates. So if we need to increase our reserves, we look at our rates, and we can do that locally.
Anyone?
Nope.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
With that, I believe we will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of the committee of the whole meeting. We will break for a little while to visit the 125th year museum, right? And then we'll resume our board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Tomorrow.
Excuse me, 125 years, the group of gentlemen got together at the Bartlett Tap and incorporated our community. So this is sort of the kickoff of a year of celebration to mark that event.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Arons. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Arons?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for March 1st, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Arons?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Dany?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Yeah.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our committee of the whole meeting this evening is under Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item, the ABC marketing plan. Jim, do you want to briefly discuss this? Because my thinking on this is that we should probably delay discussion of the marketing plan until we get the final report on transit-oriented development, just so we can make sure that those two mesh together, but...
I think that's a great idea.
It's fine with us. That transit-oriented development plan should probably surface around early June.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Actually, that does a good idea.
Does anybody understand what he's requesting?
Yes.
Is this something we're needing to table, or does it need to be, you can just say?
That will be a question that your village attorney should answer.
It's just on committee, so it doesn't require a table.
All right. Does anybody have any comments on it this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have in the committee of the whole meeting this evening is the final item is the Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Dany, the civic group funding.
Thank you much, yes. The next item is civic group funding. There was an ordinance passed in 2015. I don't remember what it was, 2015, what was the number? Doesn't matter. And it had to do with civic funding. It was for the benefit of public enjoyment and on a nonprofit basis, and the purpose was for numerous not-for-profit community organizations providing desirable services that benefit residents of the village. And it also goes on to talk about special public events that benefit the village and its residents. And we have before this evening tens of different groups that have requested funding from the village, and I don't know, would you like to, would somebody from staff like to talk about this a little more?
Before we ask for additional information, while we continue the course of our other events, we wanted the more formalized process in order to look at the expenditure coming in after the vote for, we have our election for next week. We have a new intent of applications for the on-site, uh, for the, and two of those groups are returning requests for the Davis, the Davis additional funds. The rest are requesting that we have previous, uh, one of the exceptions is the DuPage Senior Citizen Council, which has requested fewer dollars from this year because their outside companies, the successful this year, they're requesting seven and a half, five dollars.
Yeah, well, the total amount that's requested this year is $60,060, and that is if Bartlett Lions Club, they had asked for either $500 or $1,000, and that was with the $500 sum, it was $60,060. And obviously, if it was $1,000, it'd be $60,560. But this is only for discussion purposes, and I'm sure that we do have some discussion on this, so.
I think the whole intent of establishing this process was to bring order to chaos. Chaos is an overstatement, but, you know, it wasn't a very organized process, and it's great to see the different entities stepping up and talking about different community needs. I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are, but I don't think the intent was ever to increase the amount of money that we, that the village spends on civic organizations. It seems to be my recollection from last year, that we weren't going to increase, if anything, we were going to see a modest decrease.
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering, we don't have a set limit on this budget currently. Is that correct? $30,000, and we divide it between whoever comes in? That's not the case?
No, that isn't the case. There isn't a set on that we go allow equally to all, but in the past, it's been an individual ized request.
Well, we have the DuPage seniors, the Fourth of July Committee, it's been $12,000 since the centennial. Little history, and maybe Valerie can help me with this if I forget anything, but I remember specifically the Fourth of July Committee, well, the Fourth of July celebration was originally by the Chamber of Commerce, and it was at Villa Olivia.
No.
Oh, it wasn't, see? I'm wrong already. Help me out.
There was a Fourth of July celebration put on by Villa Olivia.
Okay.
Where you had to pay Dany.
Yeah, was that through the Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, might have been. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and that's fine. No, no, help me out, please, because I'm going back now.
But then for years, nothing.
I remember that many years ago.
We had nothing. The Park District picked up fireworks and added a few little rides that were on the Fourth of July.
And that's where the $12,000 came from. That was a donation by the village.
No. Then the, then there were a group of people, me included, that said the Fourth of July should be a bigger celebration. We should try to keep people in Bartlett and off the roads. And at that time, we put on the first official Fourth of July celebration, as it's known today, and that's been 25 years ago.
Yeah.
So then several years later, because we wanted, the committee felt that fireworks was actually the big draw, one of the big draws, that perhaps the village could help us out. And so we requested the $12,000. That became a wine item on the budget. And at that time, it was specified by the committee that they would show the paid invoice before we asked for the $12,000, so that we took some responsibility in at least.
Well, my, my point is that, is that the $12,000 has remained constant over the years.
Yes, and we spend approximately $40,000 each year.
Yeah, and I know that this year, that the contracts have all been signed for the Fourth of July celebration, and so the $12,000 that they're requesting is something that we've done in the past, and...
We think since it's going to be our 125th year celebration, maybe we might want to up that a little bit.
That is a great idea, trustee Carbonaro.
You know, I think what we need to do is, in general discussion here, is to delineate how this goes about in the future. If I recall, Chairman Ranky hit it on the head, there was no parameters around this prior to, I think it was Chairman Ranky that brought up doing this in order to put some parameters around it so it was more transparent. Everybody knew what the village was doing with funds that were coming in, and it was, there were some guidelines. Well, now we're getting to the stage where we're at a point right now where we need to delineate how this is going to work, you know? Kind of opened up Pandora's Box here, and then you, we're put into a situation where potentially you're picking and choosing if you're going to limit the amount of money, or you make everything equal, or that these are discussions that we need to have, because there's groups that are relying on this, and it's, it's something that we've opened up here, rightfully so, because it needs to be transparent, and it needs, there needs to be some, some way, mechanism of applying for it so these groups can depend on it every year. But it's our job right now to delineate the amounts, because they're probably budgeting for this year. So that would be our task at hand right here, is what I'm, what I'm guessing, correct?
Well, it's a starting point, but...
When, well, it's got to be done by next, by next week. And do we, according to the ordinance, when are we paying these things out? When is the, is there, is there stipulated?
There is.
Okay, so we can give them an IOU.
And you don't, like, the DuPage senior citizens?
I hear you.
The DuPage senior citizens would be funded whether or not we funded any of it. That's funded through the county.
That's been a question mark on the board for many, many, many years, the DuPage senior citizens. It's a food draught, right, or?
Well, what about considering what the applications that we have, and just grant what these, they're asking? I'm just throwing this out. I don't have a really a good idea of where I'm going with this, but grant what they're asking for, and then try and tailor it next year, you know, put some type of restrictions on a limit or something like that. I don't know.
I don't think you can make any of these decisions without being subjective.
I know, that's the problem.
Some of the needs are greater than others, and, yeah, it just, it... Some of the needs are greater than others and, and, yeah, it just, I think it has to be subjective, it has to reflect the intent of the board and how they want to help the different groups in the village. It's not unusual for the village to, to fund different community activities. That's not the question, the question is how much and to whom, and that can't be anything other than subjective.
Yeah, and the problem is, I look at all the organizations that request the help and I can't in good conscience say they're not entitled, because everyone serves a distinct purpose and serves, serves the community and the village, as the ordinance has, has pointed out.
Where do you want to go?
Well, it's, we're not voting on anything, that's discussion, is there any other discussion? I mean, I, I'm kind of between a rock and our place in this, ladies and gentlemen, I really am. I'm not going to sit here, you know, and say that I'm going to restrict one of these organizations because of the purposes that they serve in the community that we live in. I just in good conscience can't do that. And I'm sure that, you know, the number is $60,000 and we're looking at, boy, it's this evening, in millions of dollars, I think that, you know, somehow we can appropriate, you know, the $60,000 that these groups are looking for.
But that's really only the start, I mean, that's.
Well, that's the problem.
That's it, that's what we're saying, is we got to have some sort of confine on this, because otherwise it's $60,000 this year and $90,000 next year, just keeps going up.
Perhaps not. You've got two, you've got two items on here, the Fourth of July Committee and Arts in Bartlett. They have been line items in the, in the budget all these years. So I would say start with that and leave those alone, except that I would have, I would, I would, yeah, and leave them at $6,000, because I would like to know what they need the additional $1,850 for. There was a point at which, and I, I know I, Arts in Bartlett needs the funds to stay in the space that they're in across the street. There is no question that they have raised the awareness of arts in this village. However, what they are is a landlord, because the way that they make their money is by renting to artisans. The Color My World lady, there are some people that teach piano or whatever in one of the rooms over there. There was a photographer there at one time. So they rent to these people in order to have a space. And I, I don't know how important it is to make sure that they have a space to still be able to fulfill what, what their purpose is. That I can't judge. But of, you know, these two, I would suggest that we leave those, because they have been line items. The Bartlett Chamber of Commerce.
Pardon me, which ones were those again?
That was the Fourth of July.
Right.
And Arts and Bartlett, but leave Arts and Bartlett at $6,000. The Heritage Days, we've committed to the trolley, I think, which is a great addition to Heritage Days. But in my, in my opinion, and we can discuss that, obviously, I, I don't, as long as the village sponsors the trolley, I think that's, that's a contribution. And that's what, where we should stay at. I don't agree with the proposed budget figures at all. Bartlett Chamber of Commerce, that's the same as they have asked for every year, and I believe that's to put together the new business packets, is that right?
However, if we're going to mention that, I would have to say that even though I certainly believe in the Chamber of Commerce, I've been involved and pay for the Chamber of Commerce every, since I've had a business here in Bartlett for 26 years, I do know that they have a strong membership and they also charge a reasonable fee to be in it of over $100, close to 200 now, to be members. And when you have 300 people, or 300 businesses approximately, that get charged that fee, I don't know that finances are, it's almost as if the village is really not contributing to the organization, but advertising with the organization. So even though I'm certainly a strong supporter of the chamber and I don't want to diminish that at all, whether they need $2,200 from the village is somewhat debatable.
Nan, it looks like you actually outlined what that includes, right? I mean, these are actual costs. It's like a gold membership and a sponsorship for each one of the events throughout the year, so instead of coming to the village and saying, will you sponsor this year, which we typically do, you just added them all together. So I think, I think the Chamber of Commerce one is actually the most line itemed request of them all.
But we could just be a member, we could donate and contribute if it's just a matter of having our name and being involved with the Chamber of Commerce without.
But I think we, I think the village has always, since I remember, sponsored almost all of these events in some way.
We do pay for breakfast with.
In some way, shape or form, and this way you're just doing it one time. Yeah, that's kind of what we, what we set out to do. I'm, I strongly agree with the Chamber one just primarily because they line itemed exactly what it includes and I don't, I don't think it would be any different if we would one-off.
I just don't know that it's a need for the money in this situation.
We'll agree to disagree.
Well, while you guys are agreeing to disagree, I have to point something out. The one that really, really, one of the ones that really struck me in my heart is the Lions Club, they're asked for $500. So I had to pick up, I had to pick up, go through and find their, their application. And a note in here says, whatever you can give is much appreciated. $500 or $1,000 would go a long way to serve Bartlett. And I thought that was very, very, you know, realistic in what they're asking for, for $500. And when I, when I first looked at it, I thought, oh yeah, I'll give them a thousand.
Well, I think that the Lions Club is actually doing something for, really requesting the money for the Labor Day Dash.
Yeah.
Which is another event that brings people into Bartlett and really helps to, you know.
Well, you could use that same argument for Heritage Days.
You can, absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
I mean, I was on the streets for Heritage Days and went over and visited some of the businesses that were open, specifically Bruce's place and walked through there. And I met a number of people that weren't, you know, from the village.
Right.
And it was the same for Fourth of July. Fourth of July, we had people coming from, from Addison, we had people coming from Ipanoak.
Right, yeah, that's an important event to keep going.
You meet all kinds of people when you work the beer tent.
But I, I think we had to, do we want to do the proposed budget on that then? For $3,000? For Heritage Days, for sponsoring the trolley? Is that what we want to do?
I don't think any of us really know what to do.
Let me add something up here. It's my opinion that the organizations we've been supporting thus far throughout, before opening up the, the box here, the, the new situation should maintain at least the level that they were getting supported before. And we have one organization that's $7,000 less than what they asked for, and we've had one board member suggest tonight that they probably might not even need that amount. But if we take that $7,000 and attempt to divide it up amongst the new groups that are on here, maybe that's one tactic that we take. And then we, we reach out to some of these folks and say, for instance, the library, they're asking for $10,000, they're, they're attempting to build this, this platform and gazebo, that's great, but we aren't going to be the bulk of the fund there. And the, the total cost is like, I think, nine, $11,000. So I think it's pretty unrealistic to have the village be the bulk of the cost and have everyone, they need to do what these other groups are doing, and they do it so well as, as to do fundraisers and get the rest of the expenses.
Or rename the organization to Friends of the Village instead of Friends of the Library.
That detention.
This is a joke.
So then your, so then your proposal would be to take that $7,000 savings essentially from the senior, DuPage senior citizens and then divide that up among the other four applicants?
Yes, and then, and then we're just going to analyze what the increases are for the other organizations. Does the board feel justified in increasing the Arts in Bartlett?
No.
We could have a straw poll on that. Does the board feel justified in increasing the Heritage Days that amount?
The Arts in Bartlett brings quite a bit of people from outside of Bartlett into the downtown area.
Who's that?
I think, if you look at our downtown area right now, and you look at that town center, who's there?
Right.
You know, it, the Arts in Bartlett, they bring in so many people from outside the village, so I, I think that would be money well spent.
But if they're, if they're coming from outside the village, how's that helping Bartlett?
They're spending money in Bartlett, they're eating in Bartlett.
Well.
It's the same thing for, it's the same thing for Heritage Days.
Absolutely.
I think Heritage Days has done nothing but every year to grow and expand and bring more and more people into the downtown area.
And it's grown.
And I think if they need extra money to do things, then we need to probably do more than just the trolley.
I think, I think that's an important one to keep.
That's important, to keep bringing, building on our success and seeing the events grow and grow in Bartlett. So we keep getting more people coming in and seeing our downtown area and utilizing the businesses and the services that we have.
Well, is it safe to say that we've identified four civic organizations that are, that we deem are extremely important? One would be Fourth of July Committee, then it would be Heritage Days, then it would be Arts in Bartlett, and Bartlett Chamber of Commerce.
What about Bartlett Historical Society?
We haven't even, we haven't even really talked about that one yet.
I would suggest that we, we provide $1,750 for the four new applicants.
I'm sorry?
That's $7,000 divided by four. So $1,750 for the four new applicants. And then I would like to hear from Heritage Days folks, is $7,000 something that's going to make or break it? Is it some number, because I didn't quite understand exactly what it was going to be used for, other than future advertising. So is $5,000, $4,000 enough? Is it something where we work on this now that we have so many more groups? Do you have any additional things? Yeah, sure. Because I think Heritage Days is also a very important thing driving people.
I hate to say it, Bruce, but I think you're going to have to open up the beer garden.
So thank you, thank you for this forum to, to talk about events. And I've attended the, not Metra, RTA hearings, and some of their preliminary hearings, events are one of the key aspects of economic development. And what your trolley does for Heritage Days is very important, very important. It's one of the key attractions to Heritage Days. You know, however, it is our 125th anniversary, so we'd like to step things up for our 125th We, we bring people into the town, this is the event that our downtown has for its economic development, the one. And for your $3,400 that you give for the trolley, there is a handful of volunteers that manage the whole event, that deal with the insurance, that deal with sponsorships, that do all of this free, free. We, we get, yes, it, it helps our businesses, but if we walk away from, if those five people walk away from Bartlett Heritage Days, then Bartlett doesn't have any event. And we want this event to continue to grow, we think this request is a modest request. At the end of last year, the village was kind enough, is Tony here? Tony's not here. They produced a video and it was shown on cable TV. And that was a significant cost and it was a significant boost to the marketing budget that is limited by the five people that go around to different businesses and, and ask for donations for promotion. We're looking for money to promote our downtown's event. It, it's a win-win, the way I see it. It's money well spent. Fourth of July, I love, the downtown is a ghost town during the Fourth of July. Fourth of July does nothing for the economic development of our downtown. National Night Out, I love, I love it. Does nothing for our economic development of our downtown. So.
Okay.
Kevin, I wouldn't use it for a particular ride, I'd, I'd said it before, our group of volunteers, and say, how can we best?
And, and my, my point is, is it's just a little vague, you know, kind of a number that we say, okay, we can do the, the trolley, but then we've got another $4,000, it's a little bit vague.
Sure.
Let me ask the board this, let's propose, let me propose that there's $12,000 Fourth of July Committee, everybody agrees that that is a, a big number, a big event. I, I would suggest that the DuPage senior citizens leave them where they're at, they ask for less, which is remarkable coming from this organization. Heritage Days, instead of the seven, we go five. Arts in Bartlett, instead of the seven, eight, we go six, where it was last year. Chamber of Commerce, what they're requesting is membership dues and sponsorships, which we've done in the past. Lions Club, we go 1,000, and the rest gets $1,750, that's $38,300, which is right at where we were budgeted.
The Lions Club is $1,000?
1,000.
Instead of the 500 they're asking?
Yeah.
What did you say for, nothing for the Historical?
$1,750.
$1,750 for all of the new folks.
Oh, okay.
And my reasoning there isn't certainly based on what, I, I think that they're new organizations, this is something that, that they maybe are just now putting into their budget, because it probably never came up before. Now we can actually request some funding from the village.
Bartlett Historical Society has been around.
I mean, I mean, they're, they're new on our, on our contributions.
On our.
I mean, they're new. They're new on our contributions. So I think it's, I think it's fiscally responsible to try to keep it where it's at, and we've kind of divvied, this way we've, we've divvied some up to new organizations that have asked and, and basically submitted a request. And we've also, you know, reduced a few here and there, but we've accommodated most everybody to the point where it's about the same as 2015, 2016. So does anybody have any comments, questions, issues?
I'd like to reiterate my, my comment, this is our 125th year anniversary, so for the Fourth of July, we're going to give them the same amount for a very important date for us. I would like to see that move up a little bit.
But is that committee, are we very privy to the fact that the committee that runs that is certainly well overfunded, I would guess, for a couple of years in a row, right?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I have no way.
You don't want to give them money that is out of, not a need base?
No, 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 well, all I can tell you is that my limited contact.
The committee usually is completely funded for an entire next year at the end of the previous year.
My limited, limited contact that I've had with those individuals is that this is something that they've, that the village has done for years past, and they count it on it, and contracts and groups and whatnot, you know, have been signed, and they also have that with the fireworks. So this.
Can I make a suggestion? Let's ask them, will it make a bigger pizzazz on the 125th of Bartlett if we add a couple thousand dollars to this? If it's not going to, if they say yes?
Well, it's going to buy more fireworks.
Yeah, then we'll say, let's see your budget.
More money into it, you're going to get more fireworks.
More fireworks, yeah, yeah. Which is, everybody comes from miles around to see them now.
Vince, let me ask you that, I love the idea, that's fantastic. But what about the, using that same concept that you just talked about, the same thought pattern? And even though we're talking about cutting these other groups down to $1,750, we had talked about Heritage Days, reducing them to 5K, but you know, you brought up a very, very valid point, it's 125 years, I would be in favor of leaving that at the seven grand for this year, for the 125th.
Oh, good idea, good idea.
Well, Vince is the one who talked about it, and I just picked up on it.
Leaving, leaving which one seven grand?
We would like Heritage Days to be the forum, if possible, to celebrate the 125th anniversary.
So by all means that that.
As long as it's the Fourth of July.
Yeah, by all means, then I think that the $7,000 would be in order for this year.
I agree.
We could always reduce it next year.
As long as you promise to put an emphasis on the birthday.
Make yourself look good.
You'll see anything. That's it, let's do it.
Okay, now, you know, one, just so we're all clear, this has to be, I mean, does everybody understand what we're attempting to do here?
Yes.
So just to reiterate. So just to reiterate, Mr. Chairman, you want to give us a rundown of what you heard?
Sure, sure. Here's, here's my understanding. And again, if I'm incorrect, please correct me.
I'm sorry.
All right, I have the Fourth of July Committee at 12,000 with the possibility of increasing that based on the 125 years. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then the DuPage Senior Citizens, we're leaving them at 5,000. Heritage Days, I had it, there's seven, I had it at 7,000 for this year because it's our 125th. Arts, Arts and Bartlett, we reduce them slightly, we're, we're now at 6,000. The Bartlett Chamber of Commerce, we're 2210. The Lions Club, we're at 1,000. And then the newcomers are the Bartlett Historical Society, that would be at 1,750. Friends of the Library would be at 1,750. The Bartlet's Women's Club would be at 1,750. And the Bartlet's Veterans Memorial would be at 1,750. Let me just go back. The Bartlett Historical Society asked for 5,000. And it was consensus, or a general feeling here, that that would be reduced to 1,750. The Friends of the Library, I want to give you what they asked for, was 10,000, and we're suggesting a reduction to 1,750. The Bartlet's Women's Club, they were at 7,500, and we're, again, we're suggesting 1,750. And lastly, the Bartlet Veterans Memorial asked for 3,000, and we're suggesting 1,750.
Is there anyone here from the DuPage Senior Citizens group? Because I see people here from all the other-
I have a, I had a problem with it last year and the year before.
The year before and the year-
I do have a problem with it. They're going to be funded whether we send them money or not.
Who's it?
And I think the cost per, last year we talked about it, the cost per resident served was very high. And, and since it's already funded, I would, you know, very apologetically say, we're gonna fund, you know, our, our groups here.
Does anybody have an opinion on that this? I don't really-
My, my question goes back to, if we're, if we're talking about potentially increasing either the Fourth of July and/or the Heritage Days allocation, then we're, math is not my strong suit, but we would, the total would be over 28,700. So we're right back at spending more money than we had intended, intended to do so. So if we're gonna give somebody more, then others have to have less.
Well, the only, the only exception we're making this year, or the only rationale this year that I see, is that it's because of, it's our 125th anniversary. Now, next year, you know, that would no longer be the case, but-
Well, maybe, maybe we go then with Trustee Aaron's suggestion that we don't, we don't fund the, the DuPage Senior Citizens. I mean, you seem, Trustee Aaron, you seem very strong on that issue.
On the DuPage seniors?
The seniors.
I just do. I, they get funding from all, from other sources. I know that DuPage Township, I'm sorry, Wayne Township funds the, these are meals on wheels, so to speak. I know that Wayne Township funds them. And I know that the county funds them. So I, I, God bless them, I, they do good work, and I'm not arguing that at all. It's just that if they're getting funding from other sources, perhaps we could cut ours back.
That makes sense.
I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Well, what do you think would be a fair number to, to reduce that by? No, they're asking for 5,000.
5,000, yeah.
What, what do you want to reduce it to?
Zero.
Zero.
Oh, zero.
And I know that's not the first time that that's been brought up in a board meeting, the question as to whether or not we should be funding that.
Sorry. Here's my final question.
How does everybody else?
If this is what we're going to fund for the year, if anybody else comes in later on in the year and asks for any funds, there won't be anything available.
That's the reason why you set this up.
Okay, so God forbid that the, the Lions Club wants to change the sign outside that says Merry Christmas, they're gonna be SOL. Something to think about.
Well, we really haven't made a decision on the DuPage Senior Citizens. We have T L's response, but anybody else have any comments? What about a nominal amount, like 1,750, like we did with the other groups? Do you still feel zero?
I still feel zero. Concerned.
Anybody else?
How long have we supported the DuPage Senior Citizens?
Search and do what?
How long have we supported this staff?
Many, many years. 10, probably.
We just never discussed it.
And have we always given them 12,000 a year for?
No, they prove it out.
The amount varies from year to year. They look at what other organizations give, like what their other funding sources are. They look at their costs of providing services, and then that gap is what they ask us for.
They actually give us the number of seniors in Bartlett that they serve, and the cost in part is how much, how many people in town they have served.
How many people is that, 20?
Pardon?
Isn't that like 22 people?
It varies.
They didn't come in, yeah, they didn't come in.
Probably at 20.
20?
20 people.
Well, this is incorrect then, because it says 1,700 meals a year to 50 senior citizens in, in Bartlett. As well as additional-
Yeah, everybody's gonna eat more than one meal, so I, I-
Yeah, right.
That kind of works.
Yeah.
I'm paying for money.
I, I think Trustee Aaron's approach makes a lot of sense. That 5,000 is money well spent on the Fourth of July, and Heritage Days to celebrate Bartlett's 125th.
I agree. And-
All right.
I, I, until we're proven wrong, agree that they will get funding no matter what for that, so.
Well, let me, let me just ask this question. We've, I respect your opinion. The DuPage Senior Citizens, we have worked with them in the past, over the years. So now what we're saying is, they've asked for 5,000. We're saying, all right, in, in one instance here, we're, we're giving you nothing. However, when I look at this, we have four new society, four new civic organizations that we're giving 1,750 to, and you've supported me in the past, and now you're saying, I can't have anything? I think that they should at least get, you know, something. I, I don't think that they should be cut out in total. I, I don't think it's right. I don't, I just don't think it's right. You know, you've worked with these people in the past, you know, we've, we've worked with these people in the past, and now we're, we're shutting the door? It, it just doesn't make sense to me. There should be some type of a, at least a token donation made, and, you know, the new groups are getting 1,750. I would think that at a minimum, you know, we could at least do what we're doing for the new four new groups that are coming in.
I could go along with the 1,750.
I'm sorry?
I could go along with the 1,750.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
And the math doesn't work.
I know it. It's our 125th year. We'll work on it next, next year, together.
Are we, David?
It's only for discussion. We're, we're not voting on anything.
Well, I guess the question goes to staff. Staff, do you have a clear idea so that we can bring this matter to the board for a vote?
Yes, I do. What we'll do is summarize what you have, put the numbers in place, and have, is it a part of the budget that you're reviewing next Tuesday?
I would agree with Trustee Danny when I say, you know, if we're moving off the DuPage Senior Citizens, that should be increased down under the ones that we know have an impact in Bartlett. We know the Historical Society does, we know the library does, we know the women's club does, we know the Veterans Memorial Foundation does. So if we're moving away from the DuPage Senior Citizens, which frankly, I've heard for six years on this board, that that doesn't make any sense, but I don't know that for sure, but it should get shifted down to be equally divided amongst the new, new applicants, I believe. That was, that's my opinion. And I think that this is a good year to also provide Heritage Days with what they're asking for, just because of the 120, especially because of the 125th.
Yep.
Add a little pizzazz to that. So now it's clear as mud.
I got it, though.
We bought those little stickers you put on envelopes, say 125 years, whatever.
Could we reach out to some of these other organizations that didn't fill out proper paperwork? I know a lot of these, a lot of these organizations did. Then they don't deserve the funds.
Pardon?
Then they don't deserve the funds.
I don't disagree with you.
You know?
Yeah, they, they need to meet yours.
Like the DuPage Senior set, Citizens Council, they didn't complete the paperwork, you know? So, you know, all the other civic organizations, they worked extremely hard and prepared us and-
Tell us a little bit about how much they must really have to have that in their budget. That's a good point.
They're fine.
Are we finished, Chairman?
Yes, I have nothing else. Thank you, John.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Danny, second by Trustee Aaron, so the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Harbin Earl?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes, and I can't wait to get out of here.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.